Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd just like to thank the American Legion for a great parade. I'd like to thank the Albion Public Safety, they did a beautiful job in their uniforms and how they took care of the parade. I'd like to thank our city workers for teaming together at the last moment. I had went around each and every park and every one of them looked pretty good. Thank you.
Yes.
I've got to add too, that tomorrow they will be starting to put the children's walk-in down at the, at Holland Park. And then on the 15th, we have the groundbreaking. And on the 17th, we start to plant the play pieces on the children's section of the park.
Good. Yes, Andy?
Just wanted to let everybody know, today was the first day of the Build Albion Fellows Program at the college. Seven young men and women from the city of Albion have begun a summer worth of work and community service. And will be working throughout the summer on projects. If folks have project ideas, or if they just want to have a conversation with me, their director of the Build Albion Fellows. My office is now at the Economic Development Corporation, and my phone number is 517-414-1138. Be happy to talk to any and all interested individuals in helping the Build Albion Fellows help with projects in the city to revitalize the city of Albion. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? If not, I've got, thank you for the following individuals, for following up on what my last meeting brought of who worked at the cemetery to get it together and make it look really nice. Harry Longen, Steve Williamson, C.R. Nelson, Bobby Brown, Mike Riddle, Joe Pace, Mike Lurkey, Patrick Miller, James Cooper. And a special thank you to Betsy Nelson for planting all the flowers from the cemetery. I understand that it looked very, very nice, and they all need a pat on the back for doing such a wonderful job. So, I'm sorry we weren't here, but we had other plans, so. But I heard it went well and it looked great. So, thank you all very much for doing such a good job. And if there are no more comments, we'll go right on to citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any comments on the agenda this evening from citizens' comments? Come forward with your name and address, please.
Mike Bearman, 11016 29 Mile Road. And I see you're tonight, you're going to be appointing people to the Citizens Advisory Council. And what I would kind of request, again, it's not for me, but it's a request that I still think would be a good idea, is to leave four of the positions open, or open board members, two from the school system, and one from the college, and one from the senior center, because they are working, you're going to be working with them directly, and they need a little bit of advice, and give a little bit of advice in what's going on. If I were, for instance, to run, put my name in for one of these, and I wasn't with the school system for some odd reason, I resigned or something, I would still be looking out for my interest, not their interest. So, at that point in time, if it's the school system having a spot on there, then I would be asked to step down, because the school system needs to be able to have their, a person there looking out and working with the city on the different things with recreation.
Okay. I'm not sure what the capacity is right now.
Eleven.
And we have total 11 at this point?
No.
We still have open?
Yes.
Okay, alright. And if I'm not mistaken, two of the people tonight that will be announced belong to the seniors of Forbes, so.
And we have a school representation, and former college employee, and...
Right.
We've got pretty good makes.
I think we're watching out for that. I think the only thing I haven't seen is the school.
Yeah, well, you know, Lynn Reed's on there, so she has at least a history with the school, and is well-connected still with the school, so.
Yep. Alright, take that under advisement. Are there any other comments this, if this evening on the agenda?
Hi, Jen Best, I'm in town Southfield Street. And I want to talk about the nondiscrimination ordinance. First, I want to thank the mayor and the city council members for publicly stating support of an LGC protective nondiscrimination ordinance. I think that's awesome in a small town like ours, but it's not surprising, because we pride ourselves on valuing diversity. We're not doing all we can on that front, but we continue to work on it. Secondly, I want to publicly state my support for the ordinance as well. In the same way, to the extent, in extent, that I say it affects other groups. I was talking to someone a while back about a need for nondiscrimination ordinance that includes LGC people. And he got a positive look, and he says, "We really need one." And, well, yes, we do. We do, because not everyone here values diversity the way that we would hope that they would. And because I know there's some discriminating against me in employment, because I'm a woman, I have recourse, but if they do, because I'm a lesbian, I don't. And that's not right. So, I've been fired from a job for being a lesbian, or rather, because I've lost the homophobia. It was 24 years ago, and it wasn't in Albion. But that experience made me decide that I would come out of the work as soon as possible, so that if I was discriminated against, I could look for another job and then move on. But that is clearly a Plan B idea. It's not really something that anyone should have to go through without having recourse. So, an Albion nondiscrimination ordinance that protects LGC people isn't that necessary, and I thank you for looking at this very important ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any others? See none. We will move on to the consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes from May 18, 2015.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same? It passes. Items for individual discussion. Order and commission appointments. I'm going to do this in two segments, because two are boards and the rest are the Citizens' Advisory Committee. I'm going to start with Kathleen Steimer, who is in our audience. Kathleen, if you would, please. She is initially, her appointment for the Albion Housing Commission will expire 12/31 of 2018. Thank you very much. Betty Branch is going to be initial appointment to the Board of Review, and it'll expire 12/31 of 2016. Voice, vote on those two?
Aye.
Pardon?
You need a roll call for that.
I'll make a motion that we approve those two appointments as, as recommended.
That was my next statement after everybody told me.
Sorry, Joe.
Been moved?
Second in?
Support? Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Those two board votes are passed. The next five or six are all for the Advisory Committee, the Citizens' Advisory Committee. It starts with Chris Solis, and all of these will expire 12/31 of 2015. Elizabeth Schulteis, Joni Conkle, Tamara Coopie, and Lynn Reed.
So moved.
Support? Moved and supported. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same? It passes. Thank you all very much. B, the second reading and request for approval of ordinance 2015-02, amendment, admitment to ordinance 2013-04, the chicken ordinance.
So moved. Support?
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? That ordinance goes from four to five chickens?
Yes.
Read the acreage, if I remember right, less than one acres. It's going to go to, our current ordinance was four, the admitment will be five for less than one acre. More than one acre, you can have, we, our current ordinance said six, our admitment will be seven. So... Say again?
Oh, I just wanted to...
Go ahead.
Thank the city manager and Mr. Tracy for doing that, because some residents had asked me about that, so I appreciate it.
Okay. If there's no more questions, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus? French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
C, update on Holland Park, member Reed.
Hi, I didn't know I was on here. That's why I went ahead and did that.
Okay, that's fine.
For those of you who were not here, we're moving along nicely with the park. We planted flowers around the trees at the front section, right across from the senior center. On the 15th, we'll be having groundbreaking for the children's section. And on the 17th, at eight o'clock, we'll start placing pieces on the children's section. So, this means that the whole children's section will be finished. They're putting in, tomorrow they'll start putting in the walking children's garden. And so, that will take care of the total park for children, say, one through nine years old. Our next sections will be the teens and the senior sections as we move on down the park, and we're fundraising for that. You may make the checks payable, for all of you who have a pocketful of money, don't know what to do with it, go to City of Albion donated Holland Park. And it is tax deductible. So, we'll be working out there on, on that, and then we're going to start down at the other end. I'd just like to say another thank you to the people who came and helped me do flowers today, and to, also to the Star Commonwealth. There's two groups who've come and helped us clean out down around the river's edge two different times, and it's beginning to look very nice down there. And so, we'll be down getting, getting that finished out. And I guess that's, that's about it.
Okay. Andy had a question for you?
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Mayor. Lynn, on the 17th, that's also the day of the Chamber of Commerce golf outing?
No, theirs is on the 16th.
No...
I thought they changed it so that they wouldn't conflict with one another.
They need to change that in the E-News, because the last E-News...
Because on the Tuesday, as, last I talked to Amy, she asked us, because we were going to have our, our groundbreaking on the, on that Tuesday, she asked us to change it to that Monday, which was on the 15th. And so, then Tuesday would be the 16th, Wednesday would be the 17th, and that's when we'll start placing pieces.
Okay.
And on top of that, the Notts Presbyterian Church from Naperville, Illinois is sending up a group of 120 people. This is their, their summer, what do you follow?
The Chamber website's wrong then.
When they, mission, summer mission. And so, we have part of that group to help us. And so, they will, they will be on grounds Wednesday morning, helping us.
Thank you. The Chamber of Commerce website still has the golf outing for the 17th, so we probably need to let Amy know that that needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Can't change our date anyway.
No, I'm not asking you to change your date, I'm just...
Okay, good. Is there any questions of Lynn, from council? No? Now, discuss the nondiscrimination ordinance. Excuse me. Counsel, do we have any discussion? Yes?
On page 5 of 5, where it calls for an interpretation, I'm not clear on this, I'll read it. Interpretation: This nondiscrimination ordinance shall not be read to prohibit or interfere with a person's or religious institution's free exercise of religion as protected by the First Amendment to the United States Constitution, Article 1, Section 4 of the Michigan Constitution. I would like to ask our attorney, could he explain to me what are the elements of this? Because to me, it sounds like, based on my religion, I could use free exercise to say, "I don't want X, Y, and Z shopping at my store." And that's a national issue right now, it's...
The way that it's been applied, Councilman Barnes, is, for example, you know, I'll use it as the example, what's, what's going around, you know, obviously the hot topic right now with mending both at local levels and at the state level with the Elliott Larson's. Civil Rights Act is, is including sexual orientation as, as one of the protected categories under that. What this refers to is, for example, if a church wanted to hire a bookkeeper, and that bookkeeper was of a sexual, sexual orientation that was contrary to the precepts of that particular religion, that particular church would be, would not be forced to hire that person, because it would conflict with that religion. Is basically, I mean, that's, that's the best example I can give you of how this exception would apply.
So, if we adopted an ordinance, and someone of X, Y, and Z decided to go into a store in downtown Albion, that owner could say, "I'm of X, Y, Z religion, and I don't want you here?"
No, that's, we're, that wouldn't apply to places that are open to the general public. If you're inviting everyone in and out, you know, that's why I used a church as an example, because, you know, not everybody goes to, you know, the Church of Cullen down in, you know, down in Albion, whereas somebody that goes, you know, basically anybody can go to Family Fair, and Family Fair says, you know, "Everybody come on in," they're, they're not selective about what groups they're admitting.
So, going a little in depth, now that we know the framework, publicly, they can't be denied because of our ordinance, am I correct? If we institute this ordinance, they can't be discriminated against.
I, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
If I'm of X, Y, Z orientation, I just went into a public business downtown Albion, the ordinance applies because that's a public place that you're inviting businesses into.
Correct.
Now, what if I was a private club downtown, and same X, Y, Z person came in and said, "Hey, you're a bis, X, Y, Z, you can't come in here."
That's, but this specific, this specific exception relates to religion.
Okay.
So, if it's, if it's a religious club...
Okay, religion.
That would be something different.
So, now I can state, it has to be religious, and of a, to public nature, religious only?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Some other words, the moocs can't discriminate. The moocs cannot discriminate.
Well, there's some churches here in Albion that discriminate against them, they won't let them be members. I witnessed it right here.
I think the city manager had a good recommendation, so that we could get some of these questions answered, reform a study group, we work these answers to these questions out, before we get it, and we have 45 days to do so. Then we can answer some of those questions, and then we can all be clear on what we're trying to establish. If, if that recommendation is okay, I, I'm sure there's people opposed to that, they wanted to see action tonight, but...
Let's get it right.
I, you know, I, you know, because I'm not clear on all of it, and I think the laws are going to get thrown in here, and, and we need, and this committee will involve the city manager and the city attorney, so that we can all, you know, hash this out on the right, you know, and come out with the right ordinance that, that we need to do. Yes, Colin?
I was just going to say, that was one of those, you know, I had recommended to the city manager that, that we take a step back here, and either do it as a committee or as a discussion, because I can tell you, I dealt with something similar, well, actually identical to this, in Meridian Township, and it took a little over three months to get the logistics hammered out, because, you know, you want to have something that's going to be what you want it to do.
Correct. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to read Kalamazoo's ordinance, did you? You probably understood it a lot more tonight, but was that close to what we're working towards, is that? Okay. And like I said, I think, I think as a, as a group formed by us, that we can sit down and get this, you know, so that when we come together, everybody's perfectly clear on what we write, if that's not a problem, I would like Cheryl and the city attorney to put that together, and we'll have, according to this, 45 days, which will put us in June, July, you know, so.
Okay.
If everybody agrees on that.
We'll aim towards the second meeting in, in July, and I'll call together the groups so we can meet and try to hash out those details that are very important. Because one of the things that Colin had mentioned previously is that it's going to impact some of our existing ordinances, so we have to make sure all the language is consistent.
Correct. Okay? That sound good? Sounds good to me. Thank you. Is there any further discussion, I'm sorry, council? No? Okay.
I will volunteer. I will gladly volunteer and serve.
Right, and Cheryl made that statement tonight, Cheryl Kraus, that she would be more than willing to work with, you know, whatever group we decide to do that, in her absence, so.
Joe?
Yes?
I would also like to volunteer.
Good, alright. Thank you. B, discussion request for approval of delinquent utility bills and abatements added to property taxes?
So moved.
Second in?
Did I get a support?
Yeah.
Moved and supported. Question? I have a question. At, that's over $24,000 in unpaid water bills, most of them, I didn't even see any abatements on that list, but I could have missed them, but most of them were water bills. After we add them to the taxes, how many people, after they're added to the taxes, pay them?
It's, it's really hard to say, man. There's a lot of properties, a lot of the properties that go before closure, seem to become a certain cycle, you know, you know, you get sold, you get purchased, tax sales, you go a couple of years, you're back there, taxing you. So, there's a, a cycle on a lot of the properties, and hopefully, it's going to happen. We will get fair and hollow, covered though, I'd say we have, probably I'm just guessing, but just have some memory acts, probably just have, you have other, other things going. I think actually both of those will start there. Again, in my, like, this actually is a little lower this year.
Oh, I noticed that.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Normally, it's in the range of 36 to, to 45.
Yeah, yeah.
But it still doesn't make it right.
Right.
You know, I mean, that hurts our water and sewer rates, because of those delinquent bills. That has to be made up someplace. And unfortunately, guess where it goes? To our citizens in higher prices, so. Yeah, the problem, I guess I have with it is, once it, if we recover half, so we're looking at $12,000, $13,000, which is a, you know, better than nothing, how long before we recoup maybe the other? And this is just from this year, and this has been an ongoing problem, so do we really know what the total is that is out there, that the city has to pay for? I mean... That's what I figured.
You know, here's, again, it's all part of the system, where years ago, you didn't have a problem with the number of parcels going back for closure, and this reoccurring cycle, the same property.
Right.
I mean, this, this used to be a pretty cool, cool way. Still probably work, matter how, between a cloud, higher, parts of the property, but it's the nature where we're at, parcels, link, see, or number of linkages, parcels.
Go ahead, Pam.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Would garnishment of payroll checks not be a possibility, to actually file a civil, in civil court against them? I know that we do that in our business, and it's actually, it's turned to our advantage.
Probably, kind of, other question for our attorney. I do know that past practice has been, the linkable bills stays with parcel rather than individual.
Hypothetically, you could, but in looking at the amounts on these bills, we're probably going to pay more in filing fees and service of process fees, and we would recover on the bills. There's only a couple of these that...
Three over 300, 400, yeah.
I mean, I could tell you off the top of my head to file, just to file it, and to probably get them served, is going to run anywhere between $75 and $100 per case. So, I mean, you could do it, but I think you're going to spend more than you would recover.
Okay, thank you.
One other question. Out of these delinquent bills, everybody's on here, can I assume they're all turned off?
Well, I would say, good question. I would say, it should be, I believe, but I'm not going to guarantee it. There are some instances where, something to do with that, you do a kind of, so, we try not to get into that, it's very, quite a lot. A lot of people, trying to make sure, block current before, back down. A lot of things that, that's what I'm excited, so, you can't guarantee.
Okay, so, so that means there's probably people in town that are living without water, if they're on here. The other thing is, excuse me, ladies and, if some of these are rental properties, can we force the owners to put the water in their name, the property owner, instead of the tenant?
Uh, that came up.
Because if it goes on the taxes, it goes back on them anyway.
Right. That came up several years, and don't hold me at great liberty to dictate how they do business, in the landlord, or, uh, certainly, we, I know we do, when they get to the point where they are polished up, this, do something else, do the bills, one to the tenant, and one to the, you know, some landlords, or some kind of something like that, obviously.
I'm just, I'm trying to figure out if there's a, a way we could set up a payment plan, you know, for these folks to be able to, you know, get that caught up. It just, you know, I mean, to take this beating year after year after year, you know, it's just, I don't know, there's got to be a system, yes?
If you would allow, Mrs. Stimmer seems to have some information concerning that in the owner's name, our new housing commission?
Sure. Excuse me.
Name is Abby Steimer, and I guess it's 10, 600, the last guy wrote it, however. HUD would allow you to either have the water bills in the landlord's name all along, or have a clause in the lease that says, "Any utilities that are not paid is a lease violation." Therefore, you're being required to move out faster than you would other costs.
Ah, okay.
But the other thing is that if you have that bill on your credit report, HUD cannot lease you. And so, if you've got an individual who owes the money, and they don't pay it, and all you do is register it to their credit report, they're going to have to pay it off before they can move into the next person.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. And I'm not trying to beat people up that can't afford to pay their water bill, but unfortunately, that's what makes our water bills go up for everybody else, you know?
And I ask this every year too, but like, so it's going in the summer taxes, but how many people are paying the summer tax? Are paying their, how many people are paying the tax?
Summer tax?
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I mean, some people, they choose to wait to pay some, like, five or whatever, and the cost is a lot, but, but, I don't think there's any big difference between those, some of those, uh, numbers, close.
Okay.
It's, just, I don't know. It is, uh, if you, uh, and, uh, it may.
Okay. All right. If there's no more questions, then Tom, thank you very much. Any more questions, council? If not, um, the request is to put the approved delinquent utility bills and abatements added to property taxes. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Discussion of ordinance for privacy fences with the post side in towards residence and finish side facing the street. Uh, I think Maurice brought that to the table. John passed out the zoning ordinance.
Yes, I am asked this because of, uh, our plans of street scapeing downtown, making Albion my place and place making. Council can take a look at the fence. We already have an ordinance which describes the fence inward and outward. Uh, the picture on the left lets us know facing outwards towards the neighboring property. That is the residential side based on our own ordinance. The interior of the fence has different members for building, uh, a stable stability, posts both vertical and horizontal, to hold the fence up. Uh, they're normally called stockade fences. Uh, other cities have the ordinance that I'm asking that we, uh, adopt to grandfather defenses in Albion that are already up as are, and for the future that we have the, uh, finish side facing outwards. In my neighborhood over on Coolwood Street, we have one with the members facing the street and it doesn't do the neighborhood any good far as, uh, streetscape or, or beautification. It's not in the continuity of the neighborhood. There are other areas in Albion also where these fences are of such. Uh, code enforcement officer John Tracy can speak to some of this, and having knowledge of other cities that have ordinances that, uh, control which side the facing is on. I, I think that it beautifies the neighborhood if the fence is put up the way it was intentionally designed. Industrially, uh, it, it's a different ball of wax, but for residential purposes, I would ask that we follow the norm and, and the place making that we're trying to bring the Albion and have the face, facing, uh, finish side outward to the residential, residential , uh, homes. John, would you come forward, please?
Yes, Andy.
Thank you. John, the, the front page of what you gave us, is that the proposal, or is that what we already have?
He's just showing.
Uh, again, John Tracy, I don't think, oh, oh, uh, the first page is actually from our zoning ordinance. There's a section in the zoning ordinance that requires when there's a fucking waste of land, uh, for example, residential, say, in, 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 and certain cases, it's, it's required that, uh, and, and in that case, there has to be a full fence, and it requires that the side be towards the residential and, uh, residential, as it shows.
Right.
The second portion of that, or I should say, the next couple of things after that, are actually the city's overall ordinance, and in that portion, it, um, covers the, the , the, 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 residential and such, but there are no sections of that that, uh, refer to which way the fence has to face. And in some, there are cities that have a reported finish face to always from the street that is, and, or, or, or.
Which I can understand, but what do you do in the backyard when it doesn't face the street?
Yeah. I think what we had said that.
I mean, I know what I did, but.
Right.
You know, I put the good side, that there was only a small section towards the street, the rest of it all went to the good side to the neighbor.
Right.
Um, which has normally been the norm.
Right.
Now, you're saying there is a problem with that? I didn't.
Well, I would just, there'd be a uniform ordinance that everyone could, on council, agree by a vote, that the inside should face the, uh, the, the, the homeowner. I mean, the finish side should face the residential. What you got, you're facing pure woods, that wouldn't apply.
Right.
Okay, that, that's what I'm asking, right?
Right.
Because now you have, you have two different things here, facing the street.
Right.
Or facing, you know, the neighbors.
Right, and, and I think that the neighbor thing is kind of dodgy, like, if I look at the fence that my neighbor and I put up together, officially, since we put it up together, there's no wrong way to do it. We just have to agree which way.
Right.
Pick it's on. And I, and I, and I'm okay with that, I think, of maintaining that. Between two neighbors, if, if the installer has the approval, then they negotiate with the neighbor as to which side gets the posts.
However, you both are still within compliance to the ordinance, because the fence is facing one.
Right, 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 right.
And when in the mayor's situation, he got pure woods, so he can take his, uh, uh, members and face the woods, because there's no residence there.
Right.
So, he would be, he's in compliance right now.
Right.
But if there's a home next door or behind the mayor, the ordinance would say, the members would have to face his house.
Unless you would, are in agreement with your neighbor, right? So if my fence, between my neighbor and my house, has the members on my side of the fence, but because we both put money in to build this fence, we would, it would be perfectly legal to have it the other way.
Well, if he didn't have an adjoining, surround his to hide your members from the other residences, you would be illegal. It would have to be another enclosed fence around that area to hide that from the.
This seems like.
When two properties have one under, and the two property owners decide to put a fence on the property, which typically, you're not doing that, you're happy on property ownership, or at that point in time, both individuals, both property owners have to, uh, obtain.
That's right.
A.
The permits.
Permit for the fence, and also, right, the state, that the, the, doesn't have, uh, owner, and such, so.
Right.
I guess, I'd probably say at that point, that.
It doesn't matter.
Whoever's, yeah, whoever's happy working on side or other, depending on.
Yeah.
But it still would have to be within the ordinance.
Have, I mean, have, have we, I mean, have you received a lot of complaints about this? Have there been major issues about it?
Over the years, depending, uh, probably, uh, a couple of complaints a year.
And it's probably from the neighbor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Neighbor, somebody driving by.
Bigger picture is the future of our city. How do we want our city to look as a collective body?
Right.
I, I, I fully understand what you're saying. I, now, the question is, how do you word it? You know? Becky?
No, I was just going to say what Maurice said, that I think what his concern was, at least it sounded like, is a visitor coming to Albion, driving through, it would be more attractive, was what I was getting.
With our fences all looking the same way?
Mm-hmm.
Without doubt. I, I agree with that, and I think what it now is just a matter of the wording of how to settle that. And I think, you know, uh, that's what I would do, is try to draft that up with the, Andy's concern as well, I think has to be.
I, I guess I'm a little confused. I mean, I don't think anybody here disagrees with the idea that any fence facing the street.
Correct.
Should have the members inside, not outside. Where I get confused is that in a fence between two properties, whether or not there's a fence that goes in front or not, that, that issue is irrelevant, because if I'm driving one way down the street, it looks nice, if I'm driving the other way down the street, it doesn't look as nice. So I, I'm having a tough time understanding why we need to regulate which side the posts are on in property between two properties, because it just depends on which way you're driving, whether or not it's attractive or not.
I, I, I may, technically, when I receive a complaint on a fence that has members and posts on the outside, uh, most of the time, it will be that it's also facing, it's around, uh, rather curious enough to have the, the, the side.
Right, right.
I mean, it's, usually what you get a complaint is, is going to be about the whole.
Right.
That's not just.
Right. Yeah. I just, I guess I never would have thought that I'd put up a fence in my property line with my neighbor without talking to my neighbor first. That, that just, just seems odd to me, but I, I get it now. I get that.
But you get wrong.
Right, right.
Often, it's a, there's never any talk with your neighbors.
Right, I, I guess, yeah.
That person.
Yeah, 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 I get it. Well, I guess I'd be in support then. I mean.
Right.
That makes sense.
That's why I say, I mean, it's the way it's going to be drawn up.
Yeah, yeah.
And how it's going to be worded, so I'm, I'm looking at, you know, you, I guess, to, I'm sure there's other ones that do that, just so the wording is the same and it's okay, you know, to do so. So, yes, Maurice?
We have this new law firm, Harkness Law, maybe they'll kind of explore writing us one up with, uh, John a little bit, possibly.
Um, a mayor is, so is the direction from council to draft some language that would amend the ordinance to allow for the proper language relative to where the members and the posts are facing, um, fences, and come back.
I mean, can I?
I, I'm going to defer to this guy, because he's the one who's going to have to enforce it, so.
I, I, I was going to say, I mean, what, could you just say that if it's facing front, the good side, or facing the street, the good side has to face the street, and if you're not going to ask your neighbor, it needs to, the good side needs to be facing your neighbor unless you negotiate something different? Could you do that?
I, I think what you could do, uh, is, uh, put an exception there, but you have two neighbors that are thinking not, or, or, an exception in there, so that would decide your neighbors, both, which one wants it. And then the rest of it is basically.
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
So if we could draft up something like that, then.
Yeah, yeah.
And then bring it to, see what, you know, I'm sure there's ordinances out there, you know, to do that. But I agree, and the same as you do, as long as it's facing the street, that it should always be the good side.
Yes.
And we can probably modify the zoning, zoning ordinance in a way that.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. It's just a matter of, uh.
Now, now, Ron, really, it used to be pretty much all over, we must cover up the zoning in a number of areas, and the last twelve, fifteen years, a lot of it has gone to, with the, that's, that's why the primary council, uh, uh, city, or, was, is, uh, designed.
Right. Okay.
Yes. I just, I do have one concern. I know we're going to do some discussion and some research. I'm concerned that, that we may get too many neighbors who have this, the members facing out, and, uh, that, that's something that I just don't see we can have. So I, we'll have discussion on it before, but I'm just.
Yeah.
I, I just don't want the members facing out. I think, I think there's a fence around the house, and two neighbors have members facing between, I, I could care less, but I, I'm just thinking absolutely, the facing should be toward.
Well, take it back to the zoning board with our.
Right.
Some wording, and then we'll bring that back, see what we can have.
We'll get a count.
Yes, I, I see him back there raising his hand. I, I, I really did see you.
I just have a comment on this.
If you have one, I, now you can come up and mention your name and your address. Actually, I should hold you until citizens' comments, but I'll let you go ahead.
My name is Bobby Tagg, at five, five, I'm on the tree. Um, I was just going to recommend like a two-sided basic fence, instead of post on one side of the fence, you got two faces on each side, which everybody's happy, both sides look good, uh, so I'll be proud pretty much to see, and I'll just wait my check to, to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that'll come back to us. Uh, G. Adoption of Freedom of Information Act procedures and guidelines. Cheryl?
Yes, um, the state legislature in Michigan has passed a, um, some bills last, late last year that require local communities to, um, adopt a proceeding guideline, um, effective July one, two thousand and five, and some of those, um, requirements include describing the fees, the process, and also making accommodations for electronic media so that the, um, the request can't be submitted electronically. So what we have before you is what was drafted with input from the city clerk, as well as some feedback from public safety.
So is that a motionable thing?
That's, because I don't have anything on my thing.
Yeah. So moved. I'll support Maurice's move, motion.
For, to adopt, uh.
To adopt these for you.
Okay. Are there any further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Please.
I'm sorry.
The, those are going to be filled in, right? The numbers and everything?
Pardon?
The, on the, um, guideline things.
Right, well, and I guess if you could amend the motion to say authorizing to fill in, uh, the telephone numbers as appropriate, blank.
Amending the motion to authorize, um.
I support the amendment to the, uh, motion.
Yeah.
Did you get the amendment?
I didn't think so.
On page, on page one, here in the written public summary, there are X's where our phone number needs to be. And so we're authen, we're making the motion to approve this pending the addition of appropriate phone numbers, um, where requests can be submitted by fax or.
You got it?
Yeah.
All right. If there are no more questions, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Future agenda items? Are there any future agenda items? Seen none. Oh.
Colin.
Yes.
Um, Chief Kip is otherwise occupied on back nine, um, so he.
He's right there.
He's right there.
Oh, oh, he did make it.
He meant to say the back row.
He meant to say back row.
Um, he can, he can give you further detail on what I'm about to address, but he had mentioned, um, there have been some ongoing issues in the city with, um, after-hours, um, service of alcohol and parties and establishments that are closed, um, outside of the state mandated, uh, liquor service hours, and some other, uh, municipalities, like City of Cal and Zoo, have adopted ordinances to address that, so I think in the not-too-distant future, um, Chief Kip and I will probably bring something forth to address that ongoing issue. And the other issue, um, that, uh, the chief has mentioned was, um, the enforcement of our fireworks ordinance has, um, become problematic, and, uh, the city of Battle Creek has made some adaptations to their, uh, ordinance, so that, um, rather than trying to enforce it against a specific individual, as, as, as you can probably surmise, fireworks calls don't get top priority, um, uh, and by the time the officers do get there, usually the people that are responsible, um, are not there, or it's a large crowd, and good luck determining who set them off, so the adaptation that Battle Creek has made is, is, um, making it more of a disorderly conduct type of fence, and thus, the property owner, uh, becomes ultimately responsible rather than the individual that specifically is setting off a firework. I don't know if the chief wants to jump in on any of that, but.
And what if they're launching them from the street? Does that make it city responsible?
I, I think Colin covered it for the most part, but the issue with fireworks enforcement has always been a problem for us, because by the time the officers arrive, it's, it's nothing we can do about it, except sit in the neighborhood and hope they don't do it again, um, where if we take enforcement action against the house, or the individual at the house, uh, causing a problem, it might make it easier enforcement for those laws. Um, and the same with the other ones that we've talked about, with the nightclubs or pool halls that are open well past two AM, uh, and you know there's alcohol inside, and spirit and so forth, we don't really have to go after them with, except with the liquor laws, and it's hard for us to prove what's going on in that building without a warrant against it. halls that are open well past two AM, uh, and you know there's alcohol inside, and spirit and so forth, we don't really have anything to go after them with, except with the state liquor laws, and it's hard for us to prove what's going on inside a building, without warning in the building, and get that without knowing what's going on in the building. So, um, it would give us other enforcement action to take as well.
Like? Like what?
What?
Like, like what? What would it, lighter?
I, I haven't read up on the flip log they have right now, or it was a letter that the chief had sent out, that I saw over the weekend, and I forwarded Colin to see if there was something we could look at, um, just something we could look at.
I think what they called it was a dis, and, and I had read it this weekend, but it was, I think they referred to it as a disorderly establishment, and basically what it boiled down to was, um, you know, any establishment that's serving alcohol outside of established business hours and things like that, things that would be, um, already legal under, under, um, state liquor laws, but this makes enforcement of it a little bit easier by, um, putting it under a different classification.
Would you still have the problem of actually getting inside?
Well, if, if there's a party going on that we're aware of, that could just reduce contact, doesn't matter at the place. Right now, what we have is kind of, you can make contact.
Okay.
Yes, Maurice? Now, I attend activities on Austin Avenue. I carry my beer in. Now, that's cabaret style, now, there's no alcohol liquor license to sell liquor in the place, so they shouldn't be selling liquor, and I haven't seen any so, so is, is that what you're talking about?
Well, if you're operating a business, you can't have alcohol there unless you have a liquor license.
We can't...
Regardless of how it gets there.
So, we can't bring it in and drink it?
Oops.
Is there anything you want to reiterate at this point?
I thought you...
What was that answer?
Well, I'm guilty. I didn't know that. I'll tell them.
Yes.
In the fifth, Maurice.
No, I'm gonna clean that up.
Can't a place be closed down if you constantly get calls about things going on there?
If you have the proper ordinances to deal with that.
We do.
No, we don't.
No, we don't, and that's what I'm referring to here. I mean, we, we have ordinances for disorderly conduct, disorderly houses, um, but it depends on what the calls are for, is it just because they're not happy because it's in their neighborhood, or if they're actually causing a problem? And then, it's a question of whether or not it's the businesses causing the problems, or individuals that are outside causing the problem, and whether the enforcement has to go against the individuals that are there, or the, it's complicated when it comes to those things, that we need to clear some of that stuff up in our...
It does, it is, yeah, something needs to be...
Okay. I need to see you after this. Are there any further questions of further agenda? I, I don't have one of the chief, uh, I don't have a future one. I'm, I'm, I missed discussing, uh, the consent calendar. Can I mention it now? Real quick, I, I missed it. What do you want to talk about?
What, what is there to discuss?
Discussion, we had discussion D on trains going through town carrying hazardous waste. There were comments from myself, uh, Chief Kip, and Councilwoman Kraus. But my comment was not there stating that the city of Albion did not have the schedule of what time those trains are coming in. That was my key point. Chief Kip doesn't even have the, the schedule of what time those trains are coming in with that hazardous waste. So, I, I just want to ask, can I be added to this?
Okay, right.
Do we need to amend?
Speaking of fireworks, we, uh, fireworks are the third?
Yes.
Okay. That used to come to council for our approval.
And that'll...
And I kept wondering why. Fireworks are not in Albion. They're in Sheridan Township. So, what are we approving?
Well, I think, I think it's because we have police and public safety on, officers on duty during that event.
In town.
In town.
But I don't think we are in Sheridan. They usually have the sheriff and their fire truck and stuff there. So, that's why that's not being brought for our approval, is because, you know, we raised the funds and things like that, so...
Right.
But we want to get the word out that the fireworks are the third of July this year. We want to make sure that that comment gets out, uh, so, uh, you'll be hearing more and more about that. I just wanted to make sure people didn't, you know, get confused about the fireworks, so...
It's gonna be a long night.
Yeah, that's true.
Motion to excuse absent council members?
So moved. Support.
Any questions? Cheryl did leave a letter and excuse, so... All in favor to excuse Councilmember Kraus? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Cheryl is excused. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes and proper decorum is required. If there's city, if there are comments, please come forward with your name and your address, please.
Gordon, Mel, Fester, Salem, United, first one, three, West High Street, in Albion. I have been connected to Albion Rainbow Connection, which is the general child minority and allies support group here in town. We worked with, um, people from Unity, Michigan, regarding, um, information about how to go about requesting a non-discrimination ordinance, and I'd just like to suggest that the, um, studying group would work with Unity, Michigan, and with the, um, attorney that they refer this to, Jay Keppler. And that way, you have the experience of bringing other communities, uh, carrying the reinvesting online room.
Sure.
Yes, thanks.
Sense. Thank you very much.
Already in contact with Jay.
I'm sure Colin probably knows this.
From ECLU?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Bobby Taggitt, at five oh five, I'm on the street. I'm just my mother. We've got an issue up here at the graveyard. We also have pictures and, uh...
Oh, dear.
There's a lot of stuff been being damaged by the mowers. Actually, after we just did Memorial Day, you know, we cut the grass away from the town, it was dirt, dirt, no reason for a mower. Actually, even the grass did get cut as we came through, the blade wasn't using the gate. Was he drunk, I don't know. I did find a baggie on the ground that was tied in the top, the lights were kind of filled bag, so, you know, pictures of that too. But to downstairs detention today, uh, we filed a police report on this, that, uh, everything that got destroyed, um, a few other people's stuff got destroyed. I don't know if I need a petition, did you have a hundred signatures or anything to bring this to you guys, the detention, or? But, um, but there's something that needs to be done, because, uh, a lot of stuff has been took off there, which, uh, shit had not been touched. We do remove, uh, the items, uh, that are posted, which is like, uh, the, the angels, you know, the porcelain angels, uh, but, uh, the lights is all drilled, the flowers ran over, and then the grass is still on in between tombstones, and, you know, in the lane. So, I don't know, we've got grass Thursday and Friday, um, but I would sure like somebody to look into that, uh, which we do have pictures and stuff.
I am talk, we're talking about the Jackson family, the Jackson family.
Okay.
Elaine Jackson and her six kids.
Okay, okay.
My daughter.
Okay.
And I am getting tired, the last three, four years or longer, eighteen years they've been gone, yeah, they've been gone eighteen years. But they're still, it's still hers. I ain't never let them go, never will.
Okay.
Her husband, Mike, not me, I ain't settled with it. You know?
If it comes in front of you or assistance, and either finding out why he did not cut the grass and ran down there today, and ran everything over, allowed the blades engaged, he cut the grass for one, I mean, you go make a pass by without cutting grass, but run into everything, over everything? So, we'd like to see if you all could look into that.
We will do that.
They still the things, they take everything. They took a hundred dollar light that was shining on my daughter.
Well, we appreciate your time and, uh...
We appreciate the report, and there will definitely be a follow-up with this.
I want, can I put a fence, a little fence around there?
No, ma'am.
No, my dog?
No, ma'am.
We gotta handle.
I'll put a box around it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more citizens' comments this evening? If not, I'm gonna ask...
I need, um, listen, um, I'm Billy Taggitt, I'm a...
Monica?
I'm Billy Taggitt, I don't know if I put a quote or a series. This is unrelated, so, I'll probably set it off.
Okay.
But, um, in order of Pearl and Erie, there's a vacant white house, black town, it's condemned, named, well, nothing but this, I guess the city's cutting out grass, or somebody else. But there's a tree that's over our driveway, you have a big little tree. I already cut off some branches, kind of, or that tangle around your mar, your property, that, that branches are falling down, and you can take care of it. But, we need to have that tree either cut down, city, or whoever is taking care of that property. And on our property, we have a tree that has one of them already cut down, huddled out, but the tree is, is dying, and I don't have the means to get it there, but, but none of that, but the city says, well, you got to go and down here and say, oh, I didn't own it.
Is it a city tree?
Yep. Because I asked about removing the tree from a worker, and they said, well, that's the city's got, because that's not yours. Yours would be here, not out here by the street.
This is on Pear, Pear, Pearl and Erie?
Here.
Okay.
I know the tree.
Have you got any complaints, John?
It's probably one of the properties that, uh, helping contract...
Is mowing? Okay. We'll have to look into that and find out, but it has been noted, and we will check into it and see what we can do. All right? Thank you. Yes, Mr. Dick, if you'd come forward, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sure. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Wesley?
Wesley Dick, Senator, East Michigan Avenue, speaking in support of the non-discrimination ordinance, um, and note that history is moving on this issue, so I understand the importance of studying it, to get, to get it right. Same time, that train is leaving the station, and Albion should get on board, and, um, I hope that, uh, there aren't certain, in the right place, but, uh, our team, office said, uh, our, the moral, uh, it was, Ben's words, uh, it is long, but Ben's words, just,